Marshall, sorry for that, but we're good to go.
All right. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of August 21st, 2024. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:35 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the Town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
I'm here.
Hi, Doug Marshall, I'm present. Karen Winter.
I am here.
And Johanna Newman is absent this evening. And our seventh member will be Lawrence Klutz, but he has not been sworn in yet, so we do not believe he will attend. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak after, to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment will also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be discontinued from the meeting. Okay, the time now is 6:39 and we'll start with meeting minutes. I believe we have two sets of meeting minutes available for approval this evening. First is from June 5th of this year. Board members, did anyone have any comments or corrections on these minutes? I'm seeing a lot of hands, heads shaking, no. Jesse, your hand is up.
I was just gonna move to approve the minutes as they are.
Okay, motion to approve. Karen.
A second.
Second from Karen Winter. Thank you both. Any further comments or discussion from the board? Okay, we'll go right into the vote, starting with you, Bruce.
Hi.
All right, thank you, Fred.
Hi.
And Jesse.
Hi.
And Karen.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, that's five in favor, one member absent and one member not yet sworn in. Likewise, we'll go on to the August 7th minutes. Any discussion about those minutes, any corrections? No, I'm not seeing any hands and I'm seeing some heads shaking, no. Chris, you're doing a great job, Chris and Pam. Nobody's having any comments, they're perfect. All right, maybe I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted by Chris for August 7th, 2024. Anybody want to second that motion? Karen.
I second.
All right. Any further discussion? Chris.
I just want to acknowledge Pam drafted the minutes, so good job Pam, thank you.
Yes. Okay, we'll go ahead on and a vote for those, starting again with Bruce.
Hi.
And Fred.
Hi.
Jesse.
I abstain, I was not at the meeting.
All right. Karen.
Hi.
And I'm an I, that's four in favor, one abstention, one absent, and one not yet sworn in. Okay. Time now is 6:41, we'll go to the public comment period for general public comment. Again, about items at this time who, that are not on the agenda later. So, hold your comments for the two public hearings that we'll have later in the evening. I usually read the names of whom I can see on the attendees list from the public. So, I'll start with that and I do see Liz Larson's hand raised to make a comment, I'll call, we'll bring you in in a moment. So, there are eighteen attendees. They are Liz Larson, someone at 413-256-2160, Amherst Media, Austin Sarat, Bob Parent, Darren Gray, Judy Bailey, Mary Ann Paxton, Matthew Simon, Maura Keen, Nancy Campbell, Nat Larson, Paul Tupa, Sandy Muskrat, Sharon Sherry, Simeon Strong, Tamsin Eli, and Warren Graham. All right, Pam, if you could bring Liz over, Liz Larson. She is the only person who has raised her hand thus far. Hello Liz, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, good evening. My name is Liz Larson, I am a resident of 35 Summerfield Road in Amherst. I'm also the Executive Director of the Amherst Historical Society. On behalf of the trustees of the Amherst Historical Society, we would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Town of Amherst, Jones Library Trustees, Jones Library Building Committee, and especially Sharon Sherry for all their work on the renovation and expansion project.
Liz, we, if this concerns the library project, we will take those comments later when we get to that item on the agenda.
It's not specifically about the easement and the setback.
Okay.
It's just a general acknowledgement.
Okay.
Can I continue, or would you like me to come back later?
I, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry to have misunderstood.
That's okay. The Amherst Historical Society is housed in a mid-18th century building immediately abutting the library's property with a collection of over 7,000 objects pertaining to the history of our community. One of the stars of our collection is the groom tree, a 280-year-old sycamore that graces the front entrance of the Strong House. During the past eighteen months, representatives of the Board of Trustees of the Historical Society have had many meetings with the library and the town regarding the protection of the tree, the house, and the collection. We have appreciated their willingness to listen to our concerns and to assure that the needs of the house, grounds, and the collection are a part of the overall project conversation and ultimately the construction contract. As fellow keepers of the stories of Amherst, we are so excited and pleased about the much-needed improvement that the new facilities will provide for special collections as well as a new home for the Civil War tablets. Additionally, the improved public gathering spaces will create more opportunities to engage with one another and share our stories, continuing to build on the mission of both our organizations well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. All right, I do not see any other hands from members of the public. We will, this is the time to raise your hand if you have a public comment you'd like to make about something not later on the agenda. One last call. Okay, still not seeing any public comment. Or hands raised to make a comment. So, I will conclude that there are no other general public comments that people want to make tonight. All right, we'll move on to the third item on the agenda, time now is 6:46. This is the first of our two public hearings and it is a site plan review. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. It is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. This is SPR 2025-02. Applicant Paul Tupa at 104 North Pleasant Street, the Uptown Bar and Grill. Request site plan review approval under Section 5.042 of the zoning bylaw. Live or pre-recorded entertainment as an accessory used to the primary restaurant use. Parcel is located, or the parcel is number 14A-43, located in the BG zoning district. Board members, are there any disclosures that you should make at this time regarding your relationship with the applicant? All right, no one's volunteered any disclosures. In that case, welcome Mr. Tupa. You are muted at this point, you may want, yeah, there we go.
Okay, there I am.
Great, you're, you are a little bit quiet in terms of that first comment, so.
Okay.
May want to get closer to your microphone.
Okay, I'll try to speak up.
All right, and I see Gabrielle Gould was brought over too. Welcome Gabrielle.
Good evening all, how are you?
Very well. So, Paul or Gabrielle, if you want to make your opening statement, I guess, and then we'll have our site plan or our site visit report from board members.
Okay, yep, we had a site visit this, this afternoon, but we're going for an entertainment license to have live entertainment. So, we can, you know, I guess have trivia and just bring back some upbeat feel back to, you know, North Pleasant Street or Main Street in Amherst.
All right. Chris, this is a site plan review. Is there a site plan that we should have up on the screen?
The applicant submitted a plan of the interior of the building and maybe Nate could bring that up, or Pam, one or the other. I don't think there's much of a site plan there. Essentially, it's 104 North Pleasant Street, it's next to Miss Saigon, it's part of Barry Roberts' building that is kind of right opposite where CVS is. It's right opposite that driveway that goes into the back there. And this is a storefront that was occupied by Amherst Burger Company, the most recent people who occupied it. I'm not sure who, I can't remember who was there before, but perhaps Gabrielle does. They have outdoor dining and interior, there's a restaurant. They have permission to have the restaurant as a result of an administrative approval that was granted by the Building Commissioner. I think that was back in the winter, maybe in February, and you all have copies of that administrative approval. So, what you are looking at tonight is approving live and pre-recorded entertainment as an accessory use to this existing restaurant. Does that help?
Yeah, I guess you could also clarify why this is coming to the Planning Board rather than ZBA.
It's coming to the Planning Board because the use itself of a restaurant in that location is a site plan review, but since they didn't make any changes to the exterior other than signs and lighting, they were able to take advantage of getting an administrative approval rather than going through site plan review with the Planning Board. So, it's not a ZBA permit. You'll probably remember a few years ago that we changed the permitting of restaurants and bars, food and drink establishments, so that most of them are covered by site plan review now. And the ones that are covered by the ZBA tend to be either very large uses where the number of patrons is quite large, or else places where no food is served. They would just be a bar. So, this place is a bar and a restaurant and it is allowed to be approved by site plan review in this zoning district. And as a result, any accessory uses that are related to it are also allowed to be approved by site plan review by the Planning Board.
All right, and I guess this is therefore similar to most of our other site plan reviews where although we can put conditions on the use, we really are not allowed to reject it outright.
As long as they've submitted the correct information and they're not flying in the face of some aspect of the zoning bylaw, then you would be encouraged to approve it with conditions.
Right, okay. All right. Did we have a site visit today that folks might report on? Bruce.
You're muted, Bruce.
We did, it was attended by, along with Chris, Karen, and Fred and myself. Paul, I think I didn't have my hearing aids in, but I think you were there, was, that's correct?
Yes, I was there with you, yep.
Yes, good. And we walked in the door and as you can see, the site plan is really the, the fully built-out establishment within the walls, which are masonry. And we saw the interior, we saw that the, the upper terrace pavement outside, which is part of the, part of the site, I think, certainly is intended for outdoor dining, but the music was pointed out to be inside. The only other thing I'll say is, Paul, I recall that you mentioned that the music performance would be down towards the street end, the North Pleasant Street end of the, the, your establishment, but the plan here shows that the live music area is at the opposite end of that space. I don't frankly think it really matters, at least I can't see why it would matter. There's a solid brick wall between you and the neighbor and, and the, it's the music spills out, it spills out into the dining area and so forth of the restaurant, the outdoor dining area. But, does it matter? Are you, are you changing from this plan to what you, I, well, maybe my question is, and I guess Doug, I'm exceeding the site visit report, so maybe I should.
Why don't you hold that?
Continue.
Yeah. Okay.
We're not, we're not changing, we're not changing the site plan by any means. What I was trying to say when, when you guys did the review is we were, we want the music coming from that lower level or the trivia or whatever we have planned, just up against, just up against that wall where it's projecting sound towards the bar instead of down at the top level down below. So, it's, wherever, wherever we adjust the tables to, to get the most, most volume, I guess, or the most, so people can see or hear through that kind of middle wall through those tables.
Yes.
So, whatever works out.
So, then I guess the site visit report should be that we saw that the, the situation of the live music could be anywhere along that wall on the north side of the establishment.
Yes.
All right, anybody else want to add to that from their observations at the site? Karen or Fred? Or Chris, Karen?
Yeah, I think, I think I welcome having more live entertainment there. The, I hear that some of the tables will be taken out because the space for the live entertainment now and indeed around the pool table where is, is, is a little tight and the owner recognizes that. But it seems, I, I think it'll, it'll be very nice to have that there. And, and I, I do agree that the masonry wall, I don't think that it's going to be spilling out and causing trouble with the neighbors, hopefully.
Okay, Karen, Fred?
Yeah, not really important, but at the site visit, there was a pool table on the north end rather than what's shown on here. I think it's, that pool table is going to remain, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
All right, and that was where the row of banquets is shown?
It's kind of in the corridor.
Oh, really, okay.
I think the tables to the bottom, to the south side of that room may not be there. The banquets are there and so it may be just fitting in with where those tables are.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks guys for attending the site visit and reporting back. Mr. Tupa, am I right that there would be no changes to the restaurant operating conditions that were already imposed by the, by the Building Commissioner? In terms of the hours of operation, the maximum occupancy of eighty inside the building?
Correct.
Okay. Chris, your hand is still up, do you want to comment?
I just thought it would help you if you understood how people come in and out of this space. It was a little revealing to us because there is a door in the northern room that is just an exit door. And there's another door off the outdoor dining platform that is the main entry door. So, I wonder if you want Mr. Tupa or Ms. Gould to explain how people get in and out of this space.
All right, Paul, maybe you can elaborate.
Yeah, the, there's a front, the front door on the upper level where the outdoor dining is. We also have a sliding door there that goes out to the outdoor dining, but that's, that's the main entrance right now as you come into kind of the lounge area first. And then you can go down.
Here?
Yep, that's exactly right, that's, that's the main entrance there and then you can go down and then proceed down to the other lower level, which is, has a ramp to the lower level.
If the arrow moves to the left, the arrow.
Pam, go back to that, yeah, that's the door that, that everybody.
That one right there, yep.
Okay. And then they. The main entrance to here.
Yep.
And then there's a ramp between the upper level and the lower level, so if you move it over, yeah, that's the ramp, yep.
And the band would be on the north side, sort of facing the bar.
Correct, yep, correct.
All right. Great. All right, thanks Chris for that clarif, for prompting that clarification and Bruce, your hand is up.
Yes, one more thing to add, I think, is that Mr. Tupa said that the, all of the requirements that were listed in the fire department report have been taken care of.
Great. All right, any further comments from anyone?
I don't think you need anything from us, but, you know, reporting from Barry Roberts, he's really excited to see a thriving business in this location. And I, I think he threw his hat in the ring as a restaurateur with Amherst Burger Company and realized just how hard of a business it is and to stick with what he knows. But we're very excited to see more entertainment in downtown, more things for all ages to be able to enjoy. And I, I really see this as a replacement for the long-lost pub, which of course had different entertainment and games and was an amazing place for people to come with their little humans and then to, you know, come later in the evening on. So, we're just really thrilled to see that Paul is expanding his offerings here at the Uptown Tap and Grill.
All right, thanks Gabrielle. I guess board members, is there any, any sort of conditions you are thinking about that might be worth discussing for this approval? Anybody have anything in mind? I guess I'm wondering whether there's any sort of maximum decibel level or whether we're fine with the band operating as, during any hour when the, when the restaurant is open? That sliding door in the front, you know, whether we'd want to have that closed versus having all the music spilling out? Not that that's entirely a bad thing. But if anybody has any concerns like those things that I've just mentioned, I guess I was hoping we could discuss that. Bruce.
There we go. Doug, as I understand reading the development report, there's, there's a general requirement that the decibel level of the music at the boundary shall not exceed 72 dB, which is actually a pretty low level of sound. I mean, the, I, because of my wife's hearing problems and so forth, I routinely record decibel levels in restaurants because I'm interested to see how it works and how they compare from one to another. And this is, if this level of noise inside the restaurant would be one of the quietest restaurants I have ever, I, I, around here anywhere. So, I think we are safeguarded by that and I think I wouldn't, I would argue against conditioning that the doors be shut or anything that, because I think it is nice to have some, some vitality on the streets and that certainly can come from music and, and, and it's really nice if it's nice music, but that of course is for the listener, I guess. So, I think we're in good shape, I don't, I can't think of any condition that we need and certainly not one to, beyond what we already have that need to be applied to safeguard the interests of the, of the public.
Okay.
And the abutters.
Great.
Or the abutters.
Thanks, thanks Bruce, Karen.
And so, therefore, I would move to approve the SPR unconditionally and to close the meeting.
Okay, well, I think Chris had drafted some findings and conditions. And I think we probably ought to take a look at those before we close the hearing. So, Bruce, can we just hold on your motion for the, for the time being? Yes, okay. Karen, you had your hand up, I'd like to give you a chance to speak and then. Karen, you had your hand up. Uh, I, I'd like to give you a chance to speak and then uh Chris, you had your hand up and then we, if there's no more board member comments, we will go to public comment.
No, I, I um, I can hold off until after the findings, but I also, I'm very enthusiastic that there's going to be more uh something lively downtown. As I said, I, I'm encouraging a lot of outdoor dining with beautiful sort of vegetation around and I look forward to bringing children and sitting out there and, and uh, I congratulate you all on, on bringing this and I hope that there'll be a variety of music, one thing that's, that's you know, this loud sort of bar music. I hope it's not just that because you can really make an atmosphere with the kind of music and entertainment that you do bring on.
Okay, great. Thank you, Karen. Chris, did you want to say something? You had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that I sent out some suggested findings and conditions and a suggested motion very late in the day. It was close to six o'clock, so I want to apologize for that, but you do have these before you now if you wanted to consider them.
Okay.
Yeah, I, if I may interrupt, I think this is the, the motion because clearly I thought that the seventy DPA requirement was an extent uh condition, uh, but it's not. So I would amend my motion to uh um, the, the uh, the, the one that's suggested in Chris's draft possible.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. All right, um. I would like to call for public comment at this time. I know we have one hand already up and so the rest of you in the public, if you would uh are interested in making a comment on this project, now is the time to raise your hand. So Pam, could we bring over Sandy Musbrat, who is our first commenter?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can, Sandy.
Okay, Sandy Musbrat, thirty-eight North Prospect Street, which you will all know is a residential street parallel to North Pleasant Street. And we welcome new business on that street. But we also like to preserve our peace on the residential street uh, uh, um, parallel to it. So I said, I would recommend that you uh keep in there the condition of a limitation of sound and specifically a limitation on the electronic reproduction of sound in the outside dining area. And thus contain the music generation to the interior. I think it's probably, quite frankly, a little impractical to keep doors closed the whole time. But I would like them to keep the doors shut on the east, uh, on the west side, which is the North, uh, North Prospect Street side. And then you have mentioned the question of hours. Everybody expects certain, in a student town, a certain amount of noise on Friday and Saturday night. But we do expect limitations during the rest of the week on the hours uh and possibly at the same, a specific intensity of the sound and particularly on the, on the Sunday uh evenings.
Okay.
I recommend that the, the board look into the degree of sound briefing in the interior. I am no expert on masonry walls. Uh, they, from that presentation, I would rather gather that they were using the north wall as a sounding reflecting area. Reflection, of course, is better than transmission through.
Anything else?
No, I have no more to say. Thank you. Thank you for attention.
Thank you very much. Anyone else uh from the public? Any other public comments at this time? Okay, I do not see any other public comments. All right, board members, uh, any reaction to that uh comment from, in terms of conditions? Brad?
There we go. Uh, if I'm understanding the uh, the plan correctly, uh, the uh, any noise leakage is going to be out in the direction of North Pleasant Street and not uh towards the, the west end of the, of this space. So I think that pretty much uh addresses the, the concern that we just, just heard uh from the public.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Karen?
Uh, except for, I, I do think it is important not to uh have speakers outside. That's, that does kind of force everybody to listen to music that doesn't. So I, I like the fact that it can spill out, but it shouldn't have music that's broadcast outside. I agree with that very much.
Okay. So Karen, you would include a condition that there'll be no exterior speakers?
Um, yeah, I, well, I thi- I think so. I think broadcasting music outside is something that's for certain occasions. And doesn't the town have rules about that anyway? So there are only certain times when you can broadcast music outside, I believe.
Well, I don't know. Nate, you've got your hand up. Is, do you know anything about that?
Well, I was just going to go back to the condition that it cannot exceed seventy decibels at the property line. And so, you know, while you're talking, you know, you can look up what's the equivalent noise of seventy decibels and they say it's like a kind of a loud conversation or sitting in a car going sixty or the sound of a washing machine. So to me, it doesn't really matter whether there's a speaker outside, it's on low volume or not. It's the seventy decibels at the property line uh is what regulates it. And so we're not, you know, we're not trying to, the, the live or pre-recorded accessory use for entertainment doesn't, you know, restrict any noise outside. It's really how we define it is at the property line. And so that's a measurable, you know, condition. So if, if it exceeds it, it's something that inspectors can, can actually measure. Uh, but, you know, to say that there can't be any speakers outside seems silly when I know some businesses will have them just like in their doorway and, you know, you can hear it when someone opens the door. I just, I don't, I feel like that gets to be a little tricky to try to regulate.
Okay, good, good point. Thank you. Uh, Bruce?
Yeah, I, I was going to say the same thing, uh, and that's why I think that the, it's not necessary to condition, to, to add the condition, Karen, that you've proposed, uh, because we have a, a, a more uh elegant way of uh of controlling the problem, if it's a problem.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, just to add that, well, I appreciate Sandy's comment completely, it's the same true for the rear door, that he was saying should not be propped open. It's the same issue, right? That's the property line, so if it's noisier than seventy decibels, it would be
Yep. Okay. All right, um, sounds like uh we think that the concerns expressed can be dealt with with the uh existing proposed conditions that, that Chris has drafted. Can, uh, Pam, can you bring those back up? Okay, so we, the findings, the findings are, the board finds that this accessory use of live and pre-recorded music entertainment meets the criteria outlined in section five point zero four two as an accessory use to the principal use as a restaurant. As conditions, any live or pre-recorded music entertainment defined under section five point zero four two of the zoning bylaw shall be clearly accessory and incidental to the principal use as a restaurant. Uh, my comment would be, I believe that that comma at the end of the first line doesn't, shouldn't be there. Unless anybody has any other comments on that first condition. The second condition reads, "Sound produced by the proposed live or pre-recorded music entertainment shall not generally exceed seventy dec- DBA decibels with the doors closed as measured at any boundary of the property on which the establishment is located." Uh, any comments on that condition? Don't see any hands from folks? Bruce?
It may be just for areas clarification, the introduction of the word generally exceed, shall not generally exceed, is actually rather important. And, and I congratulate Chris, I think somewhat sophisticated because the way sound works, the, the noise, sound pressure level does spike sometimes when uh people or something happens. So having generally there, I think, is a, is a, is a good way of uh establishing what the intention is here.
Okay. All right, suggested motion, move to approve the accessory use of live and pre-recorded entertainment with findings and conditions and waivers as discussed and to close the public hearing. Bruce, uh, I think you hadn't mentioned closing the public hearing. Are you uh okay with?
I, no, I, I did, I did actually.
Okay.
Um, uh, uh, but since I, you know, I'm talking for the moment, uh, did you want to ask Mr. Tupa whether he has any objections to any of this? So you usually do that.
Paul, uh, any objections?
Uh, no objections. You know, we want to, we want, we want to be a friendly neighbor to everybody and we want, you know, like Karen said, is, you know, we want different music. We want, you know, a liv- lively place, but we want to, you know, make sure everybody likes what we're playing and they're hearing and, you know, we, like I said, just friendly neighbor. We have a place downtown Plymouth with the same, same type of thing where we have live entertainment there a lot. And we know we have to be friendly neighbors and we know, you know, a lot of the neighbors are the ones coming in, listening to the music. So it's everybody, it's got to work for everybody.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, board members, any other comments? Oh, Chris, I see your hand.
I saw Mr. Musbrat had his hand up, so I wondered if you wanted to ask him what he had to say before you closed the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Musbrat, do you in fact, yeah, Pam, can we bring him over?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, there was a suggestion there might be a change in the rules at the time of events in the town. And I don't think uh anybody uh resident on thirty-eight, uh, on North Prospect Street objects to sort of holiday celebrations being somewhat louder. Uh, but I think it's the, the generality, uh, the trouble with that uh general is that it's very hard to define. Uh, and so I think, I'm not sure whether it should be on that condition or not, that particular word. But I, I, I want to stress that in seeking peace, we don't expect continuous silence year round. And the town rightfully should ac- uh, accept a certain amount of noise and jollity at certain holidays and special events in the town. I think town regulations should recognize that.
All right. Uh, Chris, the word generally, uh, does uh the building inspector like that word?
That word is actually in the zoning bylaw.
Oh.
So it's consistent with the bylaw we already have?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's, it is consistent with the way sound is measured because you, you'll see that the DBA level that's mentioned there is the, is essentially a, a, something close to an aggregate or a median or some word like that. But sound is funny stuff and, and the, the, putting that word in is, I think, important to clarify what we mean by seventy dB for the purposes of this uh, uh, for this purpose.
All right. Okay, uh, why don't we go ahead and, let's see, Bruce, why don't I second your motion? So that we have now a second? Uh, any further discussion, members of the board? All right, we'll go ahead um, and vote on this. Uh, starting with you, Bruce?
I'm an I.
And Fred?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, five in favor. Mr. Tupa, Ms. Gould, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, uh, let's see, the next item. I can find my agenda. Here we go. Fourth item on our, let's see, first of all, the time is seven twenty. I guess we've got time to start another item before our mid-evening break. Public hearing, site plan review. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. It's being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. This is SPR twenty twenty-five dash zero three Jones Library Incorporated at sixty-seven Amity Street and Amherst Historical Society, the Strong House. Request site plan review approval under section three point three three four of the zoning bylaw. Nonprofit library or museum to allow the footing for a retaining wall associated with the renovation and expansion of the zone, the Jones Library, to be constructed within the site setback on the property of the Amherst Historical Society. Parcel fourteen A dash thirty-five in the RG zoning district. Uh, once again, are there any board, is there any board member disclosure that should happen right off the bat here? I don't see anyone raising their hand to make a disclosure. And, okay, welcome Sharon Sherry and Bob Parent. Once again, um, why don't you go ahead and give us your opening presentation and then we will have the site visit report from the board.
Hi, everybody. Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bob. Can I ask you to bring in Austin Surratt?
Yes.
And you?
He's on his way. Is there anyone else, Sharon? Not right now?
No, we're good. And then once he, once he joins us, he'll, he'll start the show.
There he is. He is here.
Just a thought, Pam, if Liz is, is still connected as the owner of the property or as a rep, perhaps you bring her in as well?
Liz Larson?
Correct. If she chooses.
I'm asking her. Yes, here she comes.
All right, welcome all.
Thank you, Doug.
Sounds like Austin, you're going to start off.
I'm just going to say thank you very much for uh conducting the hearing tonight on our desire to uh, have this retaining wall. We've been in close conversation with the His- Historical Society. I, I hope Liz will speak to the Historical Society's view of this. And uh, this is an integral part of what we're hoping to do as we move forward with the uh, important construction or renovation project uh, with the library. And uh, Bob is here to talk in particular, if you have any uh details in particular about the construction or architectural part, part of the, um, of the work. So thank you very much. If, I, sorry.
Do you have someone that will be presenting?
Bob, Bob is going to present. Yes, I will be.
Okay, very good.
If I can share my screen.
Please do.
Pam, I'm getting a message that host disabled participants share uh, screen sharing.
Wait, did you do that? When you set up the meeting?
Oh, here it is now.
I think it's done now, yeah.
Yes.
You got it?
Yes. Yes, I'm good. Um.
Very sorry about that.
No problem. Now I have to get the right screen. Sorry about it on my part. Um.
That's okay.
Let me see. I thought I had the screen ready to roll. As it turns out, I didn't. So my apologies. Um. While I'm loading up my screen, um, I'd just like to say I think we have a pretty straightforward request this evening. The retaining wall that uh we will be discussing has already been approved as part of the planning board site plan approval process for the library. The item that the reason we're here this evening is the uh portion of the retaining wall that extends on to library property. Uh, which, okay, here I go. Let me see if I can screen share now. And again, Maya, I thought I there we go. You should be able to see the site plan now.
Yes.
So if you, we have one hundred and thirty-one feet of retaining wall that starts at the north where my cursor is here. Extends down to the south um along the property line between the Amherst Historical Society and the Jones Library. And then heads to the west um towards the property line. Actually doesn't go all the way to the property line. The property line is shown in red, as you can see on this plan. There's a section view of the retaining wall that you see on the left-hand side of this sheet. Everything to the right-hand side of that vertical red line is located on the Jones Library property and has already been approved uh through the site plan review process. So what we're looking at strictly is the portion of the wall that extends on to the historic uh society property that that uh basically is there to resist the wall from overturning. The weight of the soil on top of that lower portion of the wall is it what helps to make the the wall stable. The structure itself extends two feet on to Amherst Historical Society property. Uh, then there's a underdrain that's located above the base of the wall that is also within that two-foot section that connects to the uh storm drainage system that's located on the Jones Library project, a property that's already been approved. So that's really what we're asking for today is we're asking for approval of uh uh approval of the portion of the wall that extends on to the Amherst Historical Society property that was not part of the previous approval.
All right. Any other parts of your presentation? Anything else you want to say before we go to the site visit report?
I'll uh provide a couple of comments on that build upon the site visits. So I expect I'll hear a little bit more about this, but one of the things that we provided for is if you look again back to my cursor circling, there's a large tree right at the north end of the wall located on Amherst Historical Society property. It's a, I believe it's an ash tree. Um, we discussed on site, we we have made provisions as part of the design, as part of the easement agreement with the Amherst Historical Society to protect that tree. And to protect it in the same manner that we're protecting the spruce tree and the sycamore tree on Amherst Historical Society property. So there'll be a chain link fence installed around the tree. There'll be a uh aeration matting uh system placed on the ground and there will be uh mulch uh placed above that and any equipment that needs to travel within the zip, the drip zone will be um uh will need to be uh construct or travel upon timber mats within that area. The concern we talked about today on site was root impacts relative to the tree and whether or not we had had any assessment of the tree done today. We have not. Um, but as I indicated, we're treating that this tree, the ash tree, although it is not as prominently focused on as the sycamore and the spruce tree in the very same manner as we are uh focusing on on those trees. And we are requiring a certified arborist uh to be hired by the contractor. And that certified arborist will be required to assess this tree as well as the other two remaining trees that uh have been talked about in the past. The contractor will be required to place a surety bond um of fifty thousand dollars or more uh as a basically an insurance policy to to make certain that the trees are not damaged and that sure uh surety bond will stay in place for a minimum of three years and up to five years um at the discretion of the Amherst Historical Society to provide a a level of protection and insurance that uh the contractor will uh operate very carefully uh when they're working within the drip line of that tree. Um, so I I think we're provided uh for the same level of protection of this ash tree as we as we have elsewhere and uh have a not uh, again, I think we're 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 dealing with it appropriately as we have with the other trees on the historic society property.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, any, any report from the board members who attended the site visit this afternoon? I'm going to call on you, Bruce.
I thought somebody else might take a turn.
I can always depend on you to say something.
Yeah, you can. That's true. Well, I'll say more than the first thing that sprang to mind, which is we did manage to pull up five uh um self-seeded maple weed trees. The the uh, the, we have visited this before as a, so of course we were familiar with the site from that point of view, but in this case, we were looking specifically at the wall and the line of the wall. And I think the only thing to report that might have been different from what we had seen on previous site was site visits was that we, in this case, we actually walked the to the uh ash tree end of the wall. And as Bob mentioned, there was some discussion about um the impact on the tree. The ash tree, it should be noted, I think, uh, that the drip line extends well beyond the diagram here. It's uh, it's, it's uh it because the diagram indicates the drip line ends at the uh, at the wall. Well, it's, it's well beyond that. Um, so the wall actually is quite close to the trunk. I mean, it's, you know, it's ten or or so feet away, as I recall, maybe twelve, but it's, it's pretty close. So I I had asked whether the uh not whether due care was going to be taken, uh, because we understand that that is going to happen, but whether the landscape architects or the designers had any investigation as to the likely with the consequences of of the excavation for the uh wall on this tree. Whether it would threaten the tree, whether there was any indication that someone said that it would threaten the the health of it to the point of it you know, basically uh putting it into decline. Bob said he would check and apparently he has checked and that and that that diagnosis or examination hadn't been done. But uh, he has said, as we just heard, that there's going to be a a quite a uh, quite careful uh management to make sure that whatever impact is is minimized. That doesn't say that uh that we've got any diagnosis of whether it'll be fatal or 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 adverse to the tree's health. But the bond and everything indicates that there's going to be some resources to take care of anything that happens. And and absent any uh arborist who's made that diagnosis or that investigation now, I guess we're left to our own experience, which in my case is that I personally have caused projects to be dug close to trees of this scale. Uh, similarly close and with the precautions that Bob describes of the air, the 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 cutting of the roots in preparation and so forth. I can't remember a case where any of the, we're talking about four or five instances in my, you know, the last twenty years or so. Uh, we haven't, I haven't seen a adverse consequence as a result of this kind of work. So based on my own experience, uh, I'm actually not as troubled as I might have been. Uh, earlier in the day when we were at the site, I thought, I thought about it more and thought about similar instances. And I think that it's, I I I think this is a probably not a, something that should upend the uh apple cart for doing what is intended here. Um, I mean, the only thing you would do would be to shorten the wall or something like that. I don't think that's necessary. But that was discussed and I think that was the most consequential uh part of the site visit was the uh seeing the proximity and the size of this tree, the it's an ash. It's in pretty good health, actually, for an ash. It looks, looks, it looks, it's a really lovely tree. It would be sad if anything sad happened to it. But it looks like we're probably okay.
All right. Thanks, Bruce. Uh, any of the other members have anything to add to that? You don't have to say anything. Okay. All right, so um I guess generally, board members, any, any discussion you want of this proposal? Anything, any objections, any concerns? I guess, uh, Bob, I'll ask, um how exactly do you intend to excavate for the section of uh footing that's extending on to the strong street property? Is there going to be, you know, a sheet piling or something to to minimize the size of the opening or how will you do that?
The, we haven't set constraints for locations that are not sensitive, you know, that are not located near this tree. Um, at that point, the contractor will likely open cut uh the excavation to comply with trench safety requirements. They'll typically cut it back at a one-to-one slope. As we get up close to this tree, we are requiring hand digging if necessary. And and one thing I I forgot to mention was at the north end of the retaining wall, the retaining wall is very shallow. It's only about six inches exposed above grade. The footing will go down below grade a bit, but it's at the very lowest portion of the wall. So it's going to have the lowest or the you know, the 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 least impact um as compared to other locations. But we do specify one that the certified arborist has to dictate um measures to the contractor that can go above and beyond what we said as the minimum constraints, but we do require airlancing, hand digging, and as Bruce referred to, cutting the roots in advance of the, you know, the worst thing you do for a tree is just start ripping into it and tearing the roots up. So you you carefully excavate by hand or with an air lance. If you do need to cut the roots, you cut them carefully. Um, our specs also say that if it's possible, you basically relay the root, reconfigure it so that you don't actually have to cut it if if possible. But if you do have to cut it, we do have requirements relative to the the clean, clean cutting of of the roots if they, if they need to be intercepted. So short answer is typical excavate excavation equipment up to um the drip line and then within the drip line, very careful hand excavation and airlancing.
Okay. Um, does that drainage pipe that we see in the section uh discharge to the north or to the southwest?
It'll discharge into the interior drainage system for the Jones Library. Just like the foundation drainage will connect to the storm drainage system. It'll be connected to that system. So it's not flowing towards the Strong House. It's flowing away from the Strong House and flowing on to Jones Library property.
Okay. I guess I'm uh just wondering about the level of maintenance over the next hundred years. And uh, I assume you have some sort of agreement with the Strong House, with the Amherst Historical Society about access to maintain that drain and uh any repairs that would need to be made to the wall and its footing?
Yes, we do. We actually have a couple of agreements that have been agreed to in 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 concept and will be executed. Uh, you, once we're certain that the project is moving forward, one of them is a temporary construction easement. Um, and then secondly is a permanent easement along the backside of the wall that would allow for that maintenance.
Okay, great. Uh, Chris, I thought I saw your hand for a little while. Was there something you wanted to mention? Maybe I'm mistaken.
I did have my hand up and now I can't remember what I was going to say, so I put my hand down.
Okay, all right. Well, we can come back to you. Uh, any other board member questions?
I remember now.
Okay.
It takes me a half a minute. Um, the underdrain drains to the Catch Basin, which is at the end of the walk.
Okay.
Think you can, I think it's that round item, but maybe that's a light. But anyway, the Catch Basin is towards the end of the walk and that's where it drains to, north, going north. That's what I wanted to say. Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, well, if there's no more board questions or comments at this point, I guess we'll go to public comment. So members of the public, uh, any comments you would like to make about this particular part of the library project? Just for the record, I'm still seeing fifteen attendees from the public and uh, none of them have their hand raised. All right, so I guess we'll consider, oh, okay, there's one from the, the name is Simeon Strong. Can we bring Simeon over? Hello?
Hi. Um, I'm really Gigi Barnhill, um, AKA Simeon Strong. Um. I just want to say that Bob's comments about the tree and the careful care of it accord a hundred percent with the arborist whom I spoke to um in the spring. Um, he's the uh uh, tree warden for the town of Northampton and I I just want to thank um, the powers that be that uh that tree will be looked after. Oh, yes, um, I should say that I'm not only Simeon Strong, but I'm president of the Historical Society. So anyway, thank you all.
Thanks. Anyone else? Last call. Okay. All right, uh, Chris, did you uh draft some findings and conditions for this site plan review also?
Yes, I did. And they're on the same sheet. They're on the bottom of that sheet that we
Pam, maybe you could bring that sheet back on to the screen. All right, so the finding is that the findings, the board finds that this application meets the relevant criteria of section eleven point two four of the zoning bylaw. The condition being the board project shall be built according to the plans approved on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. With a suggested motion to move to approve the waiver of the setback of the footing of the retaining wall. And to approve the location of the footing of the retaining wall on the property of the Amherst Historical Museum, AKA Strong House. With findings and conditions and waivers as discussed. And to close the public hearing. Jesse. You beat Fred.
I would make a motion for those, that long sentence you just read.
All right, uh, so I think we okay, so to approve the findings, the conditions as drafted and close the public hearing. Fred.
Um, before we do that, I'm just wondering uh whether there should be some a a sentence put in here that uh recognizes the fact that the Amherst Historical Society has approved the uh encroachment on to their property that will be involved in this. I I think it should be written down somewhere. It's not a problem, but I It's not a problem, but. Maybe it doesn't have to be, but.
Right. Chris? Any objection to that?
You could add it to the findings to say that.
Yeah, I was thinking that we, the board understands that the Amherst Historical Society is, supports the. The construction of the footing and the provisions being made by the Jones Library to protect the tree.
Yeah. Fred used the word encroachment, Doug. I thought that was a good one.
All right, supports the encroachment of the footing on its property?
And the measures being taken to, to support the tree? Provisions being made to support.
Safeguard, safeguard the tree.
Yeah.
Safeguards.
So Jesse, your, your motion would be slightly different. The findings as amended in our meeting. The conditions as drafted. And approval of the site plan review and close the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
And I, I don't think Fred seconded it, so Bruce, is that what you're going to do?
Yes.
Okay, Bruce is second. All right, I see that Gigi Barnhill has her hand up again. Why don't we bring her, let her make another comment?
The motion should read Amherst Historical Society, not museum, if you want our correct corporate name there in the motion.
Great. Amherst Historical Society.
Right.
All right. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay, I think we've got a, a motion, and we've got a second, and I think we've got the wording right, so. Let's go ahead and vote. Once again, Bruce?
Hi.
And Fred?
Hi.
And Jesse?
Hi.
And Karen? Karen?
Hi.
Thank you. And I'm an I as well. That's five in favor, one absent, and one not yet able to participate. Okay. That concludes this public hearing.
Thank you, and thank you to members of the planning board. We look forward to welcoming you to the grand opening of the renovated expanded Jones Library. And we're really grateful for the work that you do. Thanks so much.
Very good, and good luck. Okay, time is seven forty-eight. We have finished the first four items on our agenda. Chris, I think we should take our break now. Since I don't know how long the Amherst College Campus East Lot presentation will take. Does that make sense to you?
It probably won't take long to give the presentation, but there might be a lot of questions, so I think taking a break now is a good idea.
Okay. Okay, time is seven forty-eight. Let's try to do, make a five-minute recess, and we'll come back at seven fifty-three. Or thereabouts. Chris, who are we going to need for the Amherst College Campus Presentation?
You'll need Darren Gray, and I believe also Chris Tate.
Okay, Pam, maybe you could bring them over.
And maybe Sarah Barr as well.
Okay.
So Marshall, just so you know, Sarah Barr declined to come over at this time.
All right. Well, let's see if Karen can get over, get back soon.
Mr. Chair, when everyone is reassembled, would you like me to give you a presentation, like one sentence about why we are here?
Sure, and it looks like Karen is back. Do we need to wait for Nate or not?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we can go ahead. Time is seven fifty-seven, and we are resuming our meeting with the fifth item on the agenda. A presentation on the Amherst College Campus East Lot. Chris, you wanted to introduce it?
Yes, most of Amherst College's property in the downtown area is in the ED or Educational Zoning District. And there's a very short section in the zoning bylaw that talks about the ED zoning district. We really don't have limitations on what can occur there, other than that it needs to be under the auspices of a, one of, of the university or one of the colleges. And we control, I think, fifty feet within their border, just in terms of setbacks. But we do have a requirement that, under section three point two one one, that the college submit plans to us, to the planning board for projects that they're going to undertake. And so in addition to submitting plans, Mr. Gray and Mr. Tate are here tonight to explain the plans to you. I think it's a really great project. It's a, excuse me. I better not talk anymore. Mr. Gray can present.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Welcome, Mr. Gray and Mr. Tate. We look forward to your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for your, your time and attention this evening. I appreciate it.
Point of order, Mr. Chair? Excuse me, Darren. I, I'm not sure how this applies or so, but I noticed that in the, in the package, there was reference to my former firm as being involved in this project, and when I see that, I usually make a declaration that it won't affect my ability to behave appropriately. Apart from anything else, I have no further financial interest in the firm. The only interest is the friendship with the principals and the fact that my name is still on the door or part of it. So I just want to say that, and then that's it. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Go ahead, Darren.
Okay, yeah, so I'm Darren Gray. I'm a capital project manager with the Planning, Design, and Construction Department at Amherst College, as is Chris Tate. I'm ready to, to share a presentation. Chris, do you want to say anything before I get going? Just thanks for having us tonight. All right, I have prepared a presentation, so I'll do my best to share my screen here. Is that coming through okay for folks?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Great. Yes, we're here tonight to talk about a few different pieces of redevelopment projects over at our East Lot, which is sort of downhill past the train tracks from our main campus. It's really where most of our, a lot of our campus operations resides, kind of our back of house. We're going to be building an energy center with geothermal wells. We're also going to be renovating that green building in the back to add some food service functions. And also as part of our work with the Conservation Commission, we are also going to be doing some pretty substantial stormwater improvements as well. So I'll just quickly go through our team. Again, myself, Chris Tate, and again, this is a really broad project work we're doing, so it's a lot of talented folks at Amherst College involved, a really great team over there. And so Salis O'Brien, they are our civil designers for the geothermal and climate action plan decarbonization projects. Matt Simon is actually on the call from that firm. And Haley and Aldrich is our geothermal, I'm sorry, our geotechnical engineer. And the Seymour Cold Prep Renovations, that's Berkshire Design, and then CNH Architects. And then the stormwater improvements are by Bucky Sparkle, otherwise known as this engineer, who I, I assume has been through before the board before, a well-known local engineer. And so before I get into the drawings, you know, we've really been working on approvals for like over a year now. We just finished with Conservation Commission in July. We did a, you know, locked in our wetlands early with our Anrad process, just went through the noticement tent process. Had really collaborative meetings with Aaron Jacques, Dave Zomack, and others to get that approval and get really, to really understand what the town's concerns were in the area, because we're right next to the Fearing Brook, and I'll get into that more. And, you know, also just, you know, we, in that collaborative process with the town, we also kept iterating our designs, really trying to like hit the mark on things. I feel like we've done that, and got really positive feedback from the Conservation Commission. And I know also for the Geo Boar Field, I know Chris is going to be running our permitting with the Board of Health for that, and we're expecting to be before them in September. So starting off with existing conditions, our, our folks, why don't I just quickly? So this is where the project is. This area here, main campus is up the hill. And then as you get, go down, heading towards Belcher Town on College Street, this is our sort of back of house area, just to give people general location. And so College Street is over here on the left side of the screen, and it's called the Seymour Shed on this drawing. This is where we'll be doing a renovation. It's currently really a backup house for our trade shops, our warehouse. There's also some custodial stages out of there, our central energy plant, which powers the entire campus, is this. The series of buildings down here, then Hill Storage, again, is a support space for our, our trades and operations. And otherwise, it's just a big parking lot that is used by students primarily. But over by these buildings, there is a lot of just, you know, operations or operations vehicles that park here, our trades and custodial, et cetera. So that's, and as you can see, the, the, these same slides where some of these were used for Conservation Commission as well. So you'll see the green represents wetlands and some easements over here for the Fearing Brook in yellow. And then this blue line sort of outlines where the Fearing Brook goes. It actually outfalls, like a lot of downtown drains across. I should say underneath this parking lot through a large culvert, and outfalls here to the Fearing Brook, just for context. And this, of course, is the same area shown, but with a bit more information about where these projects are going to be. And so down the central energy plant, you'll see this, this gray colored box, that's going to be our central energy plant addition, our new energy center. Which is going to house air source heat pumps and water source heat pumps, which are going to be tied into our geothermal well field, which is going to be around a hundred and thirty-five geothermal wells that go down eight hundred and fifty feet into the ground each, spaced at about, you know, twenty to thirty feet apart. These will be drilled with just a, what I consider to be somewhat standard drill rig, the hole that goes into the ground is like sixty. These will be drilled with just a, what I consider to be somewhat standard drill rig. The hole that goes into the ground is like six to eight inches, and that's it. There's like no digging, they just drill right down. We've worked very closely with the drilling, our, our design experts, also the drilling companies and our construction manager, Daniel Conlon Sons, to really kind of dial in our, our drilling process to minimize impacts, to minimize our water management, the amount of spoils we're dealing with, et cetera. We have a really good plan in place at this point. So that'll be all underneath the parking lot here, and they'll be tied together by lateral piping, which then feeds back to the new central energy plant, where we can do our heat exchange with the water source heat pumps, which will then also feed our entire campus with heating and cooling. Our Seymour building up here, we're putting a small loading dock on the north end of the building, and a small pad for a compactor, and a small storage pad out back, and that is the extent of work in this area. The entire paved surface gets rebuilt when all is said and done. You know, when considering what this looks like from the street, it's pretty much when all, when this is built, it's gonna look pretty much identical. The parking lots can be built just the way it is, the small loading dock additions hidden by trees, and the central energy plant addition is kind of on the backside of our central energy plants. You won't really see that either. Associated with the central energy plant, we are relocating the driveway to make more, to make space for, you know, trucks, vehicles to get by, fire trucks as well, of course. Putting in some new drainage and detention. Then otherwise, as part of our stormwater mitigation measures, again, we worked really closely with Conservation and the Zomack on this. You know, as we did our field walks and then sat down for a conversation with them, we really had the opportunity to hear, you know, just sort of the importance of the Fearing Brook, the town's concerns. You know, like I said, it is a, a brook that, that serves the entire downtown. So when, when there's a big storms, they outfall here, and you know, storms coming off of paved surfaces aren't gonna be the cleanest water, right? So they, the town and their long-term vision wants to really rehabilitate this area as best they can. So, you know, as we heard this in those meetings, we decided we would do everything we could from our campus to sort of disconnect any untreated stormwater, and then also sort of increase our volumetric capacity in our detention ponds and other systems. So we're basically tripling the size of our detention pond to help us mitigate peak flows off the site. We are, we have, currently have a pipe that just sort of discharges directly to the Fearing Brook. So we're intercepting that pipe, putting it through a stormwater treatment chamber, then putting it into the pond to mitigate those flows before it discharges back out to the wetlands. We're gonna be cleaning the entire stormwater infrastructure in this parcel. The outlet swales both to the south here and to the north, serving the pond. Those have been gotten silted up over the years. Kind of some erosions going on, and so when our site walk, Erin pointed that out, and she asked if we could go ahead and stabilize those better and sort of reset the original topography and get them kind of functioning how they were originally intended. And so we're taking that on as well, though that's, although that's like not big infrastructure, it's actually pretty tricky work. So we're really closely with them on these parts for the stormwater. And Conservation Commission was happy with that, and so proceeding with those as well. And this is really an overview slide. I do have slides with more detail, but I don't want to, you know, get into more than the, the planning board wants to hear. So if you do want to hear or see more information, I can bring up those slides, but for now, I'm gonna keep going with the, the sort of big picture presentation. And this, I just wanted to explain a little bit more about our climate action plan, our campus decarbonization initiative here. Chris actually dug up this slide for us. Chris, do you want to speak to it? I'm happy to, but.
Sure, I can, I can jump in really quick. Thanks, Darren. So East Lot is to the right of the slide in orange there. Shows our central energy plant, the Energy Center addition, and the Geo Boar Field under the parking lot that, that Darren was describing. And this is really part of a multi-year phased project. We started last year in twenty twenty-three, and we hope to be complete in twenty thirty. So we're bringing new low-temperature hot water and chilled water infrastructure basically to every building on our core campus, which is what is shown here. The brown lines that you see, that was work that was completed in last year, in twenty twenty-three. The light blue lines that you see, that's work that we are in the process of wrapping up this year. And then you can kind of see with the other colors, areas that we hope to tackle in preparation for that twenty thirty date. And so our decarbonization effort really is converting the way we heat our buildings at the central energy plant. We currently burn fossil fuels like natural gas or oil to create steam. And then that goes through steam lines to all of the buildings. And what, and we're changing that by using renewable electricity to power heat pumps, which heat low-temperature hot water. So, you know, we aim to be circulating a hundred and thirty-five degree hot water instead of two hundred and fifty degrees steam. So there's a lot of efficiencies that you pick up, both in heat that you don't lose and also heat that you don't have to make. So because it's low-temperature hot water, we can heat it with electricity where there's no way you could, you know, efficiently make steam with electricity. So that's really what, what we're attempting to do with the Climate Action Plan. And this, this Energy Center addition is, is basically the heartbeat, the heart of the entire system. So this is really important to the initiative, and once that goes online at the end of twenty twenty-five, then we'll really be on our way to an electrified heating infrastructure on campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Good description. It's a, it's an exciting project. I'm just sort of proud of Amherst College for, you know, taking on this initiative and being, being a leader in the industry, really. But I will continue on. And so I wanted to also just sort of talk through a little bit of the logistics and phasing that'll be going on at East Lot. So this is gonna refer my notes on this one. But here again, you see, this is the same space we looked at with the overview plans earlier. It's been rotated ninety degrees, so north is now up with College Street, with the central energy plant south on the page. So this fall, we're planning to put in some test bores here. We really wanted to dial in, like, how long does it take to do each bore? The resources and durations we need to, to accomplish all of these eight hundred and fifty-foot deep bores and then have a parking lot to park on again next winter. So we'll put in all of our erosion and sediment controls this, this fall as well, which of course those, you know, changes the project goes on. And we'll be working closely with Erin Jacques throughout that. She's coming out for pre-construction meetings every time we change a phase on this project, so I'll have close eyes on it. We have to relocate this road this fall. We're gonna dig and install the foundations for the Energy Center this fall. And then also some of those drainage improvements, we won't be able to do them all this fall, just because of the phasing of the project. We'll get a bunch of that installed right here, which is also gonna further armor the Fearing Brook area from the work happening in the parking lot, as part of what we'll be doing. And then, and then in the two thousand, early twenty-five, late winter, early spring, we'll start doing the bores here. And we'll keep the green area of the parking lot open. So we've already worked with our campus operations and Amherst College Police Department, just on how are we gonna manage parking on campus? And we will be able to accommodate enough parking to serve our campus by doing this in phases. So we'll shut down the blue area in early twenty-five, and we will work in that area until summer. And then in summer, we will take the whole parking lot, because this parking lot is barely used in the summertime. At which point we can, you know, ramp up how many drill rigs we have on site. I think it'll max out at like two or three. But we'll be able to really kind of get a lot done in the summer, which is pretty common on our campus, is when we, our projects pick up speed when people aren't around. And also we'll continue to work on the central energy plant construction in twenty-five, and also get into the Seymour building renovations and small addition. So yeah, summer comes along, we close the lot, really get the drill, the drills, bores going. It's worth noting, all these bores, they are closed loop, meaning that the pipes, there's no actual exchange of, of our water with the groundwater. It's a closed-loop system. It just flows over to the central energy plant and then flows back to the geothermal wells for the heat exchange. And then there's a separate loop that feeds to the campus. So that water that goes to the, to the underground, to the wells, is completely separate loop than what feeds to the campus. But again, it's all a closed system, so no exchanges. And it's also worth noting that part of the design of this project is to balance the heating and cooling in the ground over the course of a year, right? So we're a heat dominant being in the north, but the way it'll function is to balance that, the heat we take out versus the heat we put in over the course of the year. That's, that's an important part of the design to mention. So then in fall of twenty-five, we will open this blue parking lot area and be doing our drilling operations in the green area. So we'll still have half a parking lot open. We'll continue the Energy Center and the Seymour Project. We're planning to pave and reopen the entire parking lot before winter of twenty-five. So, you know, the batch plants for pavement close typically in November. So we plan to be paving hopefully by the end of October and have this lot completely put back together, striped and ready to go. And then in twenty-six, pretty much everything comes online at that point. We will have the Energy Center up and running, the Seymour renovation will be completed, that'll be functioning. And then as those finish up, I'll just, the minor, the smaller pieces of the stormwater improvements that remain, those can then get put into place as everything in the major construction is stabilized and complete. Then we can go do those final stormwater improvements in the downstream areas. And that is our sequencing approach. And so that is the extent of the presentation. Again, I do have more information. I'm happy to answer questions. And so I'd like to turn it over to the board for feedback.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Darren and Chris. Board members, any immediate questions? I, I, a couple of occurred to me, but I don't have to go first. Anybody want to raise their hand? Karen?
This is, of course, really impressive, and I'm, I'm also thrilled that you're doing this. We personally have had a, a geothermal heating and cooling for our house for twenty years now, and we love it. So it's nice to see something so big going in. But my question is, has there been, have you had, where have you seen this? Has this been done successfully?
Okay, Darren?
Yes, I mean, Smith College is undertaking a similar initiative to feed their whole campus. UMass is doing a, it won't feed their whole campus, but UMass is installing a system. Princeton, is it Princeton? Matt Simon?
Yeah, so, so our, our engineers, Salis O'Brien, are actually at the forefront of designing these systems. I think they really hopped into it maybe ten years ago at Carlton College. And they've, they've been designing a bunch of systems since. They're also the designers at Smith, also the designers at Mount Holyoke College. So there are, there are quite a few colleges and universities who are starting to undertake this process of kind of a centralized district geothermal system. And those are just a, a couple of them.
Great. Bruce?
There we are. Because I agree, this is a fascinating and seems to be very thoughtfully and comprehensive project. But you do keep calling it geothermal. And, and because of the scale and because of who you are and because you're dealing with these folks and so forth, I wonder, I wonder whether, has, has anybody in this, in this scale of work, in this type of work for these kind of users thought of actually, or in a position, you know, geographically, where they can actually do geothermal, where they, instead of going down eight hundred feet, you go down a lot more than that, and instead of having to use electricity to basically do a heat exchange with the ground to, with presumably a COP of three or so, rather than is, 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 is any thought being given to actually using hot water from much deeper in the, in the crust of the earth to actually provide these, this kind of energy, necessary energy? It seems, I mean, I've heard of this being done experimentally or tested in certain parts around the country, but at some point, I'm hoping that we'll actually get to pioneering projects that'll actually do it. And it seems that this scale of project for, for this kind of well-endowed user, if they were in the right part of the, the planet, could really actually do something really pioneering and actually make it really geothermal, rather than just this pretend word that, for ground source energy exchange.
Bruce, you should go to-
Sorry that-
I'm just curious, Doug, this is probably, but it seems like if I'm ever if I'm ever gonna ask this question, this would be the, this would be the user to ask it.
Go to Iceland. Go ahead, Chris and Darren.
Uh, well, I will say that we, we use the term geothermal as the vernacular, because people understand what it, what it means, but I, I agree with you that it's not truly geothermal. We did get, there was a presentation, I get together with other representatives at local colleges and universities, maybe bimonthly, and, and people present to us. And there is one project, and I, I do not remember what institution it is, but they are experimenting with just drilling a really deep hole into the, into the earth. And I just, I'm sorry that I can't recall the institution that's, that's undertaking that experiment, but they are looking at it.
I, I just want to put that out in, you know, keep putting it out from time to time, because it, 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 you know, we, we, we hear people talking about, well, you know, we, we should drill baby drill, and I'm saying, well, yeah, actually, it's not a bad idea. Just don't drill for oil. You've got the technology. It's been going for many years. It seems that we, we should be perfecting what we used to use to find oil to actually find a different source of energy, and that would be it. So I, I, it's not a joke question. I, I, I think at some point, hopefully before I'm dead, this will be a question that people will be seriously considering in places where they didn't think it was possible before, but hopefully you don't have to go to Iceland, where it's really, you know, comes to you. There will, we will be more prepared to go to it, so to speak. And, but I, it's only the, the, the impressive nature of this project and the commitment you've made and how you've tied all the buildings together and how seriously you're addressing decarbonization. It seems that, that caused me to be interested even to, you know, it's, it's about respect, I think, to ask a question if you like that.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. So I'll ask two sort of small questions, going back to the the camp, the campus distribution map that you showed. That, whoops, that's the one. The first question is, there are two buildings shown that are not on this grid, Valentine and Chapin. And I'm just wondering what you're doing with those.
You, that's, you have a great eye, Nate.
So Valentine is a steam building, and we're working on our Student Center and Dining Commons project. When, when that Dining Commons comes online, the dining function in Valentine will go offline. There are still some residents, there is a residence hall function in Valentine. I believe there's about fifty-five beds in there. So those, that will continue until twenty thirty. And when we turn the steam off in twenty thirty for the final time, then those, then those rooms will also come offline. So, you know, we have long-range plans about what Valentine could be, but at this point, the only plan is that it will be mothballed. The dining function will be mothballed in twenty twenty-six, and the residence hall function will be mothballed in twenty thirty. And then Chapin is also a steam building, and it's gonna require a very large renovation. So we're just not even attempting to hook it up to the distribution system at this point, but the idea is that it will be renovated and hooked up by twenty thirty. But we don't know what phase it falls in.
All right.
Or what year.
And, and you, you gave me enough time to see that the Student Center is also- And, and you, you gave me enough time to see that the student center is also not connected. And, uh, so what's going on with that?
Um, it, it will be, it's being connected under its own project, it's connecting itself. So the climate action plan isn't connecting it, it's, it's self-actualizing its connection.
Okay, alright, so then the other question had to do with your source of electricity. You said you were going to be using renewable electricity. Are you planning to purchase that from a provider? Or, or is there a solar array somewhere on the college's campus or, or on the college properties, uh, in the future?
No, there's no, there's no appetite at Amherst College but solar arrays on campus that I've heard of. We do have a EPA, I believe is the acronym, um, arrangement in Farmington, Maine with a bunch of other, uh, small colleges. So we get, I forget if it's one or two megawatts of, uh, solar electricity from that installation. Um, we might look for similar installations for additional electricity. Or we would, you know, just buy the renewable electricity on the market. But, um, you know, part of that decarbonization effort requires us to use renewable electricity and that's what we intend to do.
Okay, great. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, this has been very interesting to hear about. I'll echo what other members said that it's impressive and I appreciate your commitment to this. So good luck and thank you for coming.
Excellent, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for having us.
Okay, time now is eight twenty-seven. We'll move on. Next item on the agenda was election, board elections and reorganization. Uh, I had asked Chris to put this on the agenda, thinking that we would have all of our board members tonight. With Yohanna absent and, um, our new member not yet sworn in, I, I'm wondering whether we should wait to, uh, elect a new slate of officers. Um, does anybody in particular, particularly want to do that tonight? Because I think we probably ought to wait. Okay, I think most people are agreeing with me. So we'll table that, Chris. Do we have a meeting? This is our last meeting in, in August, correct?
Correct.
And our next meeting then is in September when maybe everybody will be present and able to participate.
Next meeting is September fourth.
Yeah. Right after our Labor Day weekend.
So that, that'll give you a lot of time to read the packet over the Labor Day weekend.
Okay, alright, well then we'll put it on next time. Next item is old business. Chris, uh, you want to introduce the Amherst Historic Preservation Plan topic?
Yes, um, we have an intention to incorporate by reference many of the plans that we accomplished throughout the years. Our master plan, into the master plan. The master plan was adopted by the planning board in twenty ten. It was adopted again by the town council in twenty, how long ago, twenty twenty-two? I can't remember exactly, but anyway, um, the, so the only thing that we've actually accomplished to date is that we have incorporated by reference the transportation plan, which was done in, I think, twenty fifteen or something like that. Um, so now we are, um, trying to get back on track with our intention to incorporate plans that we finish into the master plan by reference. So Nate has, um, presented the Amherst Historic Preservation Plan. We had Shannon Walsh come a few months ago to present it and you all had an opportunity to ask questions and now you've had it included in your packets. So Nate is here to ask you if you will. Go ahead Nate.
Yeah, thanks, I would just, you know, to, as Chris mentioned, to incorporate it into the master plan. So, you know, it was completed, it, it's dated twenty twenty-three, it was completed in twenty-four. It's meant to really serve as an action plan for the historical commission and, and the planning board and others as well. So, you know, by, by incorporating into the master plan, the idea would be it's periodically looked at to see if, you know, any of the action items or objectives could be, um, you know, aligned with any other regulations or changes proposed by the planning board. And, you know, the historical commission is trying to determine subcommittees to move some of these things forward, you know, short-term, long-term, medium-term. And yeah, I mean, at the same time, we're just started a housing production plan and we're also doing the open space and rec plan. So, you know, in the next six to eight months, those will probably also come before the planning board for something similar.
Alright. So, uh, do you want to vote of, to adopt this plan and incorporate it into the master plan? Is that what you would like this evening?
Yes, if that's, if people are comfortable with that.
Okay.
And I looked at the last time that you incorporated a plan, which was the transportation plan and you just made a simple motion to incorporate the X plan into the master plan by reference. And then people voted on it. So I'm sorry I didn't have the language here for you, but that's essentially what you did.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, just a comment, I guess, I, I spent some time looking this over and just, honestly, I really enjoyed the history, so thank you for that. And I also just really enjoyed the, the rest of the content about what our town should think about and look at. So, yeah, that, that's it, solid work.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from the board? Alright, um, okay, so I guess to keep this moving, I guess I'll make a motion to adopt the Historic Preservation Plan into the master plan by reference. This is the preservation plan completed dated twenty twenty-three. Jesse?
I'll second that.
Okay. Anybody, any other, any other, any comments before we vote? Okay. Uh, well Bruce, I guess we'll start with you tonight again.
Uh, I, I support.
Alright, Fred?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Karen? I believe that was an aye, is that right?
Aye, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and I'm an aye as well, so that's five in favor. One absent and one, one other person not participating. Okay, um, thank you Nate and Chris for all your work on that and for bringing it to us. Alright, uh, continuing, the time is eight thirty-three. Uh, our second item of old business would be topics not reasonably anticipated, forty-eight hours in advance. Do we have any? Okay, thanks Chris, we do not. How about new business not reasonably anticipated?
I don't think so.
No, okay. Any Form A and R subdivision applications?
We don't have one for tonight, but there's one that is being revised, so we're going to be bringing that to you sometime soon.
Alright, sometime in September?
Yep.
How about ZBA applications?
Nate, do you want to talk about Wayfinders? I have a few notes, but you probably know it off the top of your head.
Sam, we mentioned the last time, the, uh, you know, Wayfinders submitted their comprehensive permanent application to develop seventy-eight units on, uh, Route nine, Belcher Town Road and then also on Southeast Street at the East Street School Site. The hearings opened on August twenty-nine. We've penciled in, you know, two to three hearings a month for the foreseeable future. And, you know, the planning board, uh, the transmitter did go out and so if you'd like to have a presentation sometime in September or October, you know, we could, we could, uh, you know, coordinate that with Wayfinders.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. We certainly had a lot of comments on the, from the earlier presentation.
Sure, I will say if you, sorry, if you go to the ZBA, uh, the ZBA webpage, the only word of appeals webpage, on the left-hand side, there, and there's a banner, the bottom tab or the bottom, uh, text is the Wayfinders project. It takes a few clicks, but all the application documents are loaded online. And so, uh, from their revised, you know, site plans from what they, you know, presented a few months ago, you know, they, they really revised the Belcher Town Road property, they just, uh, completed their illustrious site plans and planting plans. So all of that's online and, and, uh, viewable, but they can also come and discuss it. So they did, they did, uh, take the comments from the planning board into consideration. Staff met with them a few times and they really did, uh, change the design for the Belcher Town Road site.
Is, uh, ZBA going to be receptive to any additional comments from planning board or not?
Yeah, you know, the, uh, it's also going, uh, through a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. That opens, um, next Wednesday. They're, you know, they're seeking waivers from local, uh, regulations and bylaws of certain, uh, well and protection standards. Obviously they're within buffer work, you know, there's some zoning waivers. And so, you know, it's worthwhile for the planning board, uh, to look at it. You know, I will say it is a town sponsored project, you know, we, it's, uh, town-owned properties. The town selected Wayfinders as a developer. Uh, you know, we think that, you know, we had a pretty rigorous program in terms of a number of affordable units, the level of affordability and other amenities on site. So what they're able to squeeze into each site, you know, is a balancing act between say parking, uh, amenities, you know, plantings and number of affordable units. So I think they've done a, a really nice job of that. Um, you know, I think that the Southeast Street site is only about a half parking space per unit. Belcher Town Road is one space per unit. I mean, there's, there's certain things that may, you know, may be asked by the ZBA or the planning board may want to weigh in in terms of, you know, how they see that.
Okay, yeah, I think it'd be nice to have him, have it, you know, come back and, um, to, to schedule it early enough in the process that we can generate, you know, any comments we have can be forwarded to ZBA, you know, at a point when they'd still be useful.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, I think at the quickest, you know, the, uh, decision would probably be made in, uh, late November or December. So, you know, I, it'll just take a while to get through this application, just, you know, two sites and all the detail in there, but.
Okay, well, if you guys, you know, if you can work with Chris and just figure out when it makes sense to put it on our agenda. Okay, um, so that's topics not reasonably anticipated. Actually, no, that was upcoming ZBA applications. So, moving on, upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications.
Um, I think there's one that I've told you about already, it's a preliminary subdivision plan for the Chutesbury Road property. Um, and it's really a plan that's just intended to free zoning. Um, and that's on the Chutesbury Road solar property, so that'll be coming to you on September fourth. Um, and then there's another one that is, um, coming from Amherst College, which I may have mentioned last time. Woodside Avenue, thirty-eight Woodside Avenue, which is an administrative building and they're changing their parking lot and their circulation, their pedestrian access. I'm going to cough again, excuse me.
Okay. Alright, then we'll move on to Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Bruce, anything on PVPC?
Um, well, no, nothing to report there. Um, uh, but, uh, I had a question about our reports. I'm, uh, and I should have run this by you Jesse first, but, uh, uh, we have a housing subcommittee now and I wonder whether that, uh, report from the housing subcommittee should be included in this, uh, standard list of, uh, um, regular reporting.
That seems like a good idea, as long as it's active.
I could say, yeah, we're active, um, so I think that'd be appropriate too, Bruce, thanks for that.
Well, let's see, why don't we add that just this evening at the end of this list? Uh, for, for CPAC, I don't really have anything new, we have not been active in the last couple of weeks.
Doug, I just want to jump in and say for those, you know, listening that last year, the application round opened in September and closed, uh, at the end of September. So, you know, if, you know, for those who may watch this, you know, typically the CPA round used to be later in the year. It's now, you know, it's usually done by the end of September. So if people are looking to submit proposals, information will probably be coming available in the next few weeks. Right? I mean, I'm assuming that is a similar schedule or I haven't.
Yeah, I think it is going to be a similar schedule. That's what, uh, Sam told us in the last meeting. Okay, Karen, DRB?
Um, we met, but we, we, we're kind of trying to streamline our guidelines and we didn't have enough people there and it's really, uh, something that we have to individually study hard. So we, we decided to delay that, so basically there's nothing to report.
Okay. And CRC, anything, Chris? You are muted.
The CRC made another pass at the solar bylaw at its last meeting and the intention now is to, um, finish a draft and circulate it to town staff such as the Building Commissioner and Aaron Jock, who's the Wellands Administrator and, um, probably Nate Malloy and Stephanie Chigarello. And then once we have, um, a draft that's been reviewed by staff, we're going to bring it back to the CRC on September tenth. And then hopefully we'll have a draft at that point that we can start to send out to boards and committees like the planning board and the Conservation Commission, et cetera. So that's the, uh, that's the plan.
Alright, great. Jesse, Housing Subcommittee?
Great, thanks, um, yeah, we've met a few times this summer. Um, most recently last week and we will soon be bringing to the planning board a suggestion for the town to adopt some definitions. Um, or, you know, the discussion at the planning board, um, working on finalizing the language and just the background for the full committee to think about. And we also discussed something I thought should come to planning board for discussion also, which is the recent change that the governor signed, the, that Chris, you sent around to all of us. Um, so we discussed that at the subcommittee, I thought might be useful conversation at some point for the full board to have as well. Uh, just the, the consequences and effects of that for Amherst.
And, uh, are you guys taking minutes and are they getting posted on the planning board website?
I'm a little behind, but we are taking minutes and I need, I'm almost ready with the first several meetings set to get posted, so not yet, but yes, that is.
The meetings are recorded and so they should be on the YouTube channel, you know, within the planning board, uh, videos. So, uh, you know, I think there's been four subcommittee meetings and so those are, those can all be watched online.
Okay, great. Alright, uh, let's see, time is eight forty-three. I don't really have a report of chair. So, moving on to a report of staff, Chris, anything?
I don't really have a report of staff at this point, no.
I have a, I have two things, um, just picking up what Jesse said about the, the change to the accessory drilling, um, you know, unit. So the town's bylaw right now may need one or two changes, but I think, you know, I think there's a bigger conversation we had about, you know, if we are amending it, is there anything else, you know, the planning board may want to do? So the CRC also is, you know, asks themselves, you know, what would they, you know, what's the right process? Who should bring forward a zoning amendment? Uh, but, you know, I, you know, we require owner occupancy and that's really the only thing that, you know, right now, you know, is, you know, in violation of the proposed changes, which take effect in February. Uh, but, you know, there's some other pieces perhaps that we might want to look at. And so, you know, it could be a really simple change or it may be that we, you know, um, add some standards and conditions in terms of design, you know, that we could do some things in terms of massing or architectural character, uh, you know, within reason. And so we have some standards and conditions in the bylaw and maybe there's some suggestions there too. So, uh, you know, the, the intent really is to. So, uh, you know, the, the intent really is to streamline the permitting for ADUs. Which we, we do allow. We have, you know, administrative approval and then up to special permit depending on how, how big it gets. But, uh, you know, I think given the legislation, you know, there could be a conversation about what we'd wanna do with the bylaw.
Okay.
And the second one is, uh, Dotson and Flinker is, you know, still undertaking the downtown design standards. They've been meeting with a working group and they're planning a big, uh, public, uh, meeting in September. I think the thirteenth or fourteenth, so it's a Friday, Saturday. They're going to hold a tour, walking around downtown. On Friday, then they're gonna have, um, the high school cafeteria as a meeting room Friday evening and Saturday morning. To have, you know, they're hoping to have a, a large number of people go there for charrettes, for discussions, for breakout groups. And we'll start, uh, putting more information online. And starting this fall, they'll also be having community events. So they're hoping to get to the farmer's market, uh, some, a few times and then get to community events this fall. So if, you know, if, if people are interested, there's ways to participate in the downtown design standards. And I think what Karen mentioned, that the DRB is looking at, you know, looking at their own standards. And they've come up with essentially a table of contents, uh, with a list of, um, you know, number of things in terms of entryways, windows. And they're trying to fill that out. And so my thought is that that, you know, would be provided to Dotson to help with the downtown design standards. I'm not sure exactly how the DRB sees it, but I think, you know, they can, you know, can inform what Dotson is doing. And so the work from Dotson is, you know, we're still envisioning another year of this before it's finalized. But they're hoping to really get a lot of public input, input this fall and winter, and then really come up with standards next spring for review. Uh, and finalization a year from now or next fall.
Great. Karen?
So, um, to get the word out, are you planning to put this also in the paper, to have an article in the paper? Because, uh, if you really want the whole town to get involved, that's, that's something that's probably essential.
Yeah, they, there was a, a working group meeting this week. The flyers were just finalized, I think on Tuesday. And so the idea is to start getting the word out this week, you know, put flyers up and, and, you know, different multimedia, uh, efforts to publicize it, yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, we can adjourn. Time is eight forty-seven. Okay. We'll see you all. Have a good Labor Day. We'll see you on September fourth.
Thank you. Night, everybody.
Good night.